Okay. Welcome to the East Long Meadow Town Council's Financial Oversight Committee meeting of April 18th, 2019. I don't believe we have any minutes available at this point in time, so we'll skip number one. Number two is the discussion of capital projects that were presented to the town council. And Jim, you having served on that committee, you can probably tell us a great deal and fill us up. Jean, by the way, thank you for the...
Oh, you're welcome. I'm sorry you didn't get it in the first place.
Well, the projects, recommended projects, we had a capital budget committee that was run by Denise Menard and assisted by Sarah Menard, but with three civilian or resident members, including myself. And we presented, I believe, in March, recommendations for the capital planning projects for FY '20. Obviously, there are a lot of projects requested, and it was really a matter of trying to
Prioritize.
... pare them down to ones that seemed the most reasonable and the most necessary to fund for the coming fiscal year. That was presented to the town council. There was a number of discussions about different items. My notes, and just to summarize, I believe our recommendation was a total of $1,237,292 to be spent in capital planning projects that would come out of the general fund operating budget for FY '20. And then there was several that would not necessarily affect the general fund budget, either because they're separate borrowing, or it would be coming out of a different fund, or it might be a sewer enterprise or water enterprise fund, so there's a number of items like that. And then there's several that would be bonded, that the anticipation would be that they would be bonded. I do notice in the summary of the operating budget that was presented to the town council, the $1,237,000 proposed capital projects is incorporated into the general fund
Yeah.
draft budget at this point.
Yeah.
And I assume probably that means the anticipated debt and interest from the ones that were thought that they would be bonded is probably included in that operating budget.
They look like everything left.
So, yeah, that would show up under the statement on the principal and interest points?
Correct. The discussions that I had taken note of, and I think both of the town councillors were at that meeting, two of the big items that took discussion was the number of vehicles for the replacing and adding to the fleet of the police department, where there was the two normal cruiser-type vehicles and then an additional pickup truck for other requirements that weren't necessarily tied to first responding. And our capital budgeting committee had recommended two, really, you know, not to say that the third wasn't a good suggestion, but in the efforts of trying to maintain the budget at some level. So, we had not recommended the pickup truck, but there was a lot of discussion among the town council members about that. So, I believe that was part of the update, and it sounds like the police chief has provided us an additional memo that we probably want to look at.
Yeah.
Can we just close that door a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you, Mike.
You guys want it closed, or just...
At least partially closed, cut the noise.
Yeah, we'll see if it drifts open or something.
It gets a little stuffy in here a little.
So, that was the first item that was, I recall, in my notes. The second was the feasibility study request, we can talk after that.
Okay.
And the third major discussion that I recall is really the paving challenge that the town has in DPW.
Yes. Okay. So, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, going through this, the first one is the Allen Street landfill closure
Correct.
for $75,000. The fire ladder truck lease, which is in its third year, which is a payment of $214,787. And then the third year also on the ambulance at $91,947. So, this amount here, the 132,267 requested with the $82,000 is for two cruisers and not a truck.
Yeah, the 132 would be the two cruisers and the truck. The 82 that is in the recommended funding was basically two cruisers.
Yeah.
Really a sedan and an SUV.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you're working from a larger spreadsheet, or is that...
This is the one that...
This was the packet from the budget.
The blue line.
This is in the budget package?
Yes.
I'm looking at the larger sheets. I'm wondering if they're the same dates.
We're following the same order so far. The numbers are making sense.
Okay, so Allen Street, ladder, ambulance, something?
I don't see a date on here, so I can't have that.
Yeah, so, just let me sure we're on the same page.
I do too.
I think it's the same list, Tom, but she shrunk it for the...
I don't think...
Yeah. And I'm using the longer one because I have taken notes.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so, you feel that's an item that will be discussed by the council and be considered also by the manager? The cruiser replacement, or she seemed to be...
It was a topic of discussion when we presented the recommendations for capital budget.
Okay.
And this memo bears on it to a certain degree, because the original quote that's in the 132 is for $50,000. It looks like the chief and Sergeant Bruno did some more research and found that perhaps going with a Chevrolet and Silverado instead of an F-150 could get the same bang for about $5,000 less.
Yeah, I actually was at that convention as well. So, what happened is Ford reduced their price. They came down from the $50,000 for '21, dropped their price to $48,000. So, but the Chevrolet is our, let's just round it off, is roughly $45,000, so.
Okay. He believes this request deserves another look by the finance committee and possibly the town council. All right, let's mark that one for the discussion then, and I'm going to move on. The high school, this is for asbestos removal and carpet replacement of athletic offices, 24162. Recreation pineal upper lot paving at $55,000.
I think that deserves some discussion, too. That lot is serviceable for many years.
Yeah.
It's a stone lot, stone dirt lot. I think what they're trying to do is to make it more ADA compliant, but there's nothing wrong with the current lot. I think there's other ways to accommodate unloading and loading of potential folks with disabilities.
Disabilities, yeah.
You know, by creating, like they do in many locations, a curb cut with a platform.
Yeah.
Instead of spending $55,000.
I remember that.
To pave over a dirt lot that's, you know, hardly used.
Yeah. All right. With that comment, we'll check that. Information technology, which would be the town switch and router upgrades, $70,122. I would think that would be a necessity. Information technology, Chromebook devices, the request was $315,000, and $200,000 was recommended. That's probably for a staggered purchase over time, which makes sense.
Yeah, the... Right, the request was for a full implementation, and the 200 was to, you know, do it at a little slower pace.
Slower pace, but cover it. Public Works equipment, the John Deere tractor at $27,510. It's replacing a 1988 John Deere tractor, which has been used for maintaining the athletic fields. They can't locate parts anymore. I would think that's a necessity.
I don't think you're going to get any argument there. I mean, that's a piece of equipment, in my understanding, that is necessary to continue to service all those school fields. And it's, I mean, a 1988...
I think they've gotten the best out of that.
They've got a lot of bang for their buck on that one.
Yes.
For us to try to move forward with better maintenance of those fields, this piece of equipment would be essential to that DPW and the REX working together to try to get that accomplished.
Yeah. The next item is a four-pronged request for student MacBooks, student iPad replacements, Chromebook replacements, and staff MacBook replacements. Individually, the request was $27,000, $48,000, $43,000, $76,000, and $50,000 has been recommended.
Correct.
I feel, yeah, funding that all in one year, again, as with the previous ones. So, at least this will give them some coverage
Correct.
and some plan on replacement of the equipment.
And I think Ryan had mentioned that he had a plan to how to deal with the lesser amount.
Yeah, phased in. Oh, that's good. You know, at least we're not upsetting the department head. Again, under IT, the phone upgrades, we have 165 phones that are at the end of life and end of support, and this is to replace phones in the town office and school for $38,107. That sounds like a reasonable, has been recommended. Public Works equipment, Bobcat number 53, $46,000. This is a replacement of a 1990 version of this piece of equipment. Repair costs are upwards of $10,000. It's impractical to repair, so this appears reasonable as well. $46,000 has been recommended.
I think reasonable, yes. I think necessary, it sounds like it, but public works equipment, I don't know what that means. Is that coming out of water or sewer or highway? Is that general fund?
No.
This is in the general fund category.
So, this is all general funds?
Yes.
But this is a piece of equipment that, I don't know if water and sewer are going to be using this piece of equipment?
If they are, there would... There would probably, I'm just looking at if there was, and some of them were split. Let me just see if any of them in this one are, because it seemed that when a piece of equipment could be, that they did have it split.
Yeah, the mini was split.
The excavator, the mini excavator was split.
That was split.
I don't see that the Bobcat was shared.
So, that's all a lot of general fund?
Right.
Okay, Public Works, highway, again, annual highway construction. They requested $153,000. $75,000 was recommended. This is to continue with the town sidewalk master plan.
I think we need to look into that further.
Yeah.
I'd like to see further discussions. I've mentioned a number of times over the last five or six years that we should look to make better use of those funds, rather than continue to put $75,000 into the addition of sidewalks in key areas, is to somehow have better use of funds that are given to us by developers for some of the cul-de-sacs and dead ends that are being created in the town.
Yeah.
And rather than have them pay for sidewalks in those areas, which are going to have very limited use to contribute to the town and to this fund to help pay for those sidewalks in those areas that are necessary, I think there's a way to try to work that through.
Yeah. Well, I have no objection to public sidewalks. As a result, last night I was watching a planning board meeting where people from the Great Woods Development were expressing their concerns that they have no sidewalks and their children go down to the bike path. And as you know, that intersection is, can be pretty dangerous for kids on bikes. So, I think the $75,000 is good. I don't know if it covers enough, but I certainly, I marked it for further discussion, Tom.
Yeah, just the discussion. I mean, we've been putting $75,000 in there for as far back as I can remember, I think at least seven years, and it doesn't do enough. There's always some areas that haven't been covered or have been addressed.
That's true. That's true. They did a nice job on Parker Street last year, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And like he's done over the years, Bruce accumulates the money. So, last year he didn't spend the 75, I believe, so he's got that 75 plus his 75, so he can get a better bang for his buck.
Ah.
The 75 doesn't go far.
So, I was under the impression they were asking for 150 because they didn't get the budget through for the 75 last year as part of the pairing down process.
Oh, okay.
So, they didn't...
So, that's why they took...
That was why the request was 150. We'd said, well, let's keep it at 75.
Yeah.
My only comment to your thoughts about the subdivisions, and I think it's very creative, and I think it's definitely worth looking into, I'm just thinking the impact is going to be, you know, it'll take a while for something like that to percolate through and actually turn up dollars to be able to implement it to the sidewalk.
Yes.
So, it might be something to try to work through, because it may be a way of partially replacing our helping to do it, but it probably would be
Not been a few years.
One, two, three years from now.
Right, to my point in Christian's comment. Chestnut Street is, I mean, it's a very busy road. There are folks that live at the fields. There are no children that live at the fields, but there are folks who probably would like to have a sidewalk there.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I'm sure there's a process for determining what's next, you know, in terms of
Exactly.
for the use of the funds, that they must have a plan, but whether that's a plan that some, you know...
Especially for children going to school.
People might like to have more input on, you know, that's a possibility.
They've been focusing around the schools, from what I've seen over the past few years.
Yeah, but there's plenty of areas in towns that don't have
Right, they don't have schools.
Good sidewalks. And don't have schools that could still use the sidewalk.
So, that's number three for coming back to...
For further discussion, yeah. And then the roadway improvement, there was a $600,000 request with $100,000 recommended. They, Public Works recently completed payment management inventory and survey determined the overall condition of the roadway system. So, the result, funding is necessary to supplement the Chapter 90 monies. We expect approximately $580,000 this year. We usually appropriate in anticipation of that
Right.
and we get it back.
Right, and in the past, we used to never really appropriate any additional dollars towards that. This study was done, and it was quite comprehensive, but it really looked at what do we take to put and keep the streets at a condition level that would be deemed satisfactory, acceptable, et cetera.
Yeah.
And the study actually showed that you would have to spend $600,000 a year and keep spending that in order to try to get there. And at the 600 level, I think it was even closer to a million that you really needed to spend. 600 would slow the decline of the condition of the roads. So, it's quite a big...
Undertaking.
Yeah, it's almost like, you know, OPIB and whatever in terms of the liability that just keeps going, and the requirement to try to address it is pretty expensive.
I think we can all think of roadways in town that should be addressed.
But this was their, this was their way, and I applaud them for bringing it up and bringing it to everybody's attention. I think the committee felt that it was important and tried to maybe at least put something to it.
Yeah.
But that it would be extremely difficult to fit the 600,000 in this year.
Yeah.
I know there was more discussion at the town council meeting about trying to look at other ways, because we're not the only town or city in Massachusetts that have that situation.
Right.
Yeah, part of it was, part of the discussion was, in my experience, with roads, sometimes by deferring to repairs, it can be much more costly later because the damage doesn't stay in one area. I mean, you're going to get erosion under the road
Because of bigger things.
if that's what's causing the issue in the first place, then you get the water, the frost heaves.
Yeah.
So, it's something that needs to be looked at the whole picture on, how to get the most value out of the dollar that we did not decide on allocating toward that particular area.
I know there was a lot of interest, as Mike knows, I mean, with regards to trying to do something to up that fund. As Bruce indicated, that 100,000 doesn't go very far.
No.
Even the 600,000, as Jim indicated, I mean, to try to reach a 4.5 million over a 10-year period, that doesn't, you know, that's, it just continues to snowball. So, I know Consular Ford as well had it
Right, he was...
would like to see this.
Some, come up with some other way of approaching it.
Yeah, and I don't know what the other way is. I think he challenged a DPW superintendent to look at some ways to do that.
I'm wondering if there would be any type of state grant, you know, that would...
Over and above that, yeah.
Yeah, over, yeah, definitely. Shall we mark that for further discussion, or just be satisfied with it?
Yeah, because I think that one's not going to go without having some discussion at the council.
Right.
Okay. Next one is the town hall trailer mount generator. $87,657 was requested and recommended, and this is for the town hall with a docking station for quick connections under emergency conditions. I think we've seen enough emergencies in recent years. I can fully understand that one. So, that takes us through the $1,237,292.
Well, I think discussion on that is necessary, though. On its surface, it looks very simple, and it's a required requirement for most buildings to have some sort of backup for a generator, but the police department doesn't have the backup. Their backup is failing, and this says trailer-mounted. There are no critical services in the town hall that are not backed up. From my, what I understand, is the IT department has, they have backup battery services and a smaller generator, I think, is what I...
Yeah, and my understanding is the IT department does have backup capability
Yeah.
because of their, you know, they service everywhere, but the remainder of the town hall doesn't.
Right, but there are no critical services in the town hall if we were loose power at 8 o'clock this morning and we couldn't provide services.
Right, I think this would say, you know, it could be two or three days maybe before you go back up.
Well, again, it's trailer-mounted, but I would like to see, since it's not on here, the police department at least be looked at. If there's a possibility to use this generator, there's some sort of connections and necessary, you know, the outside connections.
Maybe that could tie in with the feasibility study that we were talking about.
That's possible. It's just it's something that we need to look at to see if we can move the generator around. I mean, let's say the police department lost power. There's no outside connections to connect the generator to. Same thing with the town hall. So, if they were to do the generator, I would think they would have to make those connections as well.
Interestingly, one of the reasons it's described as a trailer mount is that technically, if they don't really have the, we don't have the square footage to add to the footprint of the town hall
Yeah.
because of the restrictions that were under with the shopping center, et cetera.
But that helps. I mean, being trailer-mounted does help because we can utilize it in other locations. But again, we need that, I don't know what it's called, it's some sort of outside connection which allows you to
Right.
You can't just plug into the building.
The generator needs to be able to interface with the building, so
Right.
the portable generator, instead of buying six generators for six buildings, is a good idea.
Yeah.
But you'd have to just make a simple modification to the building with an outside plug from their panel, so that you can plug in and decide what circuits in that building you want to make hot.
Yeah, exactly.
If that's it.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, that takes us through the general fund ones. Yeah.
Excuse me, but maybe this is a good time before we start, because I have to leave in three minutes
Okay.
to go to work. Could we just pick a date and time? Did we come to a consensus on a date and time for our next meeting?
It's going to be Monday at 10:00 a.m.
Okay.
Back in the library.
And I'm available for any side conversations if there's anything I miss, if somebody could bring me up to date.
So, I'm just wondering, Chris, Jeremy, to that, with Sarah and Denise not being available today, do we want to try to pencil in something for Tuesday or whatever? Because we might need Monday to go through the stuff, at least regarding the operating budget.
Are people available on Tuesday morning?
That's not going to leave much time for the presentation, because Tuesday night is when the repairs have been done.
I know.
So, I feel uncomfortable putting you on at that time, considering.
I have an email into Kathy. I understand she's either coming back today or be back in town tomorrow, that we will talk over the weekend, and I want to know what her expectations are of any presentation on Tuesday.
Okay, and hopefully she'll join us.
So, but I think, I think if we tentatively, at least we'd be covered under the 48-hour requirement if we set something up for Tuesday morning.
For Tuesday? I'm not sure about Monday, Jeanie, because...
Because tomorrow's a holiday.
Tomorrow's a holiday, yeah.
Monday, what day's the holiday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So, the 48 hours, you know
Oh, they don't count.
it's holidays and weekends, it's business days.
So, Monday's already posted, though.
Yeah, I posted that, yeah, in time.
And we can't, so we can't do Tuesday.
We can't do Tuesday.
Okay.
No, because you've got tomorrow's a holiday.
It's going to be a long meeting on Monday, fellas.
I actually booked the room from 10 to 2.
You did?
Just in case, yeah.
Good girl, thank you.
All right, that answers that question.
Yeah.
Holidays, yeah, that throws a little bit of a wrench into it.
Okay, just a quick, if you've got a minute, I had a conversation with the superintendent of schools, and I want to go over that quickly while you're here.
Sure.
I asked him a question concerning the school, well, as I told you in an email, Pamela, the business manager, is out on medical leave for two weeks. Gordon is in and out this week because of the school break. The question that I posed to him is whether the State Department of Education still issued a school foundation guideline, and they do. East Long Meadow has always funded at 120 percent. However, our minimum appropriation this year would be $28,745,626. The next question I asked was why wasn't the fact that there were seven teachers retiring, why the financial impact, the saving was only $130,000? He said, there are seven retirements, but they are not all teachers. He doesn't believe they are. The salary for the new teachers was estimated and put into the proposed budget. However, he explained to me that some of the positions require more funding, so it's not just, you know, an average of $25,000 per position or $20,000 per position. For instance, if he has to replace a special ed teacher who has higher education credits and so forth. So, I found that a very reasonable answer. The last thing, he and I both had received the latest houseways and means budget. They've increased the Chapter 78, of course, this is not final, by another $20,000, and they've increased the charter tuition reimbursement for $25,833. So, he, you know, he's looking at possibly another $45,000 from the state. We did discuss the Meadowbrook roof project. He assured me this was strictly a fiscal 2019 issue. There is no monies other than the debt service to be raised this year, so we should not say anymore that we have to raise $2 million in the 2020 budget. He believes that the, and that was the email I sent to Sarah this morning, that the debt service for that bonding is already in the current proposal budget. So, I asked Sarah to confirm that, but she's out sick. So, that's another question for next week, so I wanted you to know that.
That's, yeah, and that's good information. That's a very important answer
Yeah.
on that, on that, yeah, bonding issues.
Okay, so we're relieved of the $2 million. Okay, Mike, thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, I have to leave.
Okay, will we see you on Monday?
Absolutely. I'm already making arrangements for someone to be able to cover for me in case something happens, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, guys.
Have a good Easter.
You, too.
Good Easter.
Don't hesitate to call if anybody has any questions.
Okay.
We'll be around all weekend, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, these other priorities, they're recommended to be funded from sources other than... Okay, these other priorities, they're recommended to be funded from sources other than the twenty twenty budget. And they amount to one million three hundred and sixty, two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Public Works Highway, we did not, that was not recommended. It was for LED streetlight purchase and conversion. Vehicle replacements for building and IT.
Well, I, I, sorry, in terms of the recommendation or non-recommendation.
Yeah.
It's that there wouldn't be a cost to the town to it. So it is here, and I think the, it, we won't be funding it, you know, as they continue to do the exploration of it and make sure that it's, the theory is what the vendor will be doing is providing financing based, based on a, taking a percentage of the savings, like eighty percent of the savings in energy costs that the town would experience by converting to the LED bulbs.
Okay.
And using that to service the lease. And the town would experience like twenty percent of the savings. And then at the end of the debt service, you know, it basically belongs to the town. But so either way, there's no, there's no, we're not anticipating any impact on the budget.
Yeah.
It sounded like a good thing, but, you know, needed to make sure that what, how they say it works, really would work that way.
Okay, so in other words.
So zero impact on us.
Zero impact. That's better than not recommended.
Yeah, it's number one priority is recommended to be funded from other, from sources other than the FY twenty budget. So for instance, the vehicle replacement for.
Yes, I see that.
Those, we wouldn't buy, the anticipation, we wouldn't buy a new vehicle for them.
Repurpose.
We'll take the hand, a couple of hand-me-downs from the police fleet.
I see that.
And.
And that's common practice we've been doing for years, which makes sense.
Exactly. And the defibrillator was the same. It would be, according to the chief, funded from the receipts reserve for appropriation in the ambulance account.
Right, once they set up that ambulance revolving fund, it's anticipated there'd be enough revenue in that to pay from that fund. Always nice to have other pockets.
Yes. Okay, Mountain View School replaced the portable modular trailer classroom with a permanent structure. One million three hundred and twelve dollars and, three hundred and twelve, seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
That one sounded like one that we really didn't have much choice. They've become pretty old and some concern that they might not pass building inspections in the near future. So, but clearly the amount, and a useful life would, would argue that it'd be done by bonding.
So this is gonna be bonded.
Right.
Yeah. So that, the bonding will happen in twenty twenty, fiscal twenty twenty.
Yes.
So the cost of the bonding and so forth.
I would assume, since it was recommended in this budget, in the same fashion that the general fund capital projects were in the operating budget.
Right.
I would think that these are incorporated into the debt and, debt and interest. And fifty thousand is still doors and replacements.
Excuse me, before we move on, so what's the impact to our budget through this bonding process?
It'll be, it'll be debt and interest.
Well, we don't know what that is.
Uh, no, but I assume Sarah probably knows what the useful life would be and will make an estimate of the interest rate, and then she'll, she'll project the debt and interest.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's an open item then, until we really understand what the debt and interest payments are gonna be.
Yeah, but for the purposes of budgeting.
Yeah.
You're gonna need to make that assumption, and she's, she's gonna, she would have had to put that assumption into the debt and interest.
Yes.
General fund budget, of course, but.
Okay.
The fifty thousand, they proposed putting the two together, you know, just putting the fifty thousand on top of the one million three. Doors and safety.
For Maple Street.
Safety items.
Yeah, we've been doing that, I think, quite along with the schools.
Yes, this, I think, would finally complete that, for that building. So those are the two bonded.
Okay. So that's, that's another one million three sixty two, seven fifteen, okay. Purchases from the enterprise fund, does that come under our purview?
Yes.
I guess in terms of whether we think it's.
Reasonable?
Reasonable.
Okay, so under the sewer enterprise, the infiltration, sewer rehab. Hundred thousand requested, hundred thousand funding recommended. That will come out of that enterprise fund.
Yeah, and we've been doing this for about five years now, I think.
Smoke testing, dye testing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The issue with that was that we had a lot of infiltration. And it's also gonna be part of what we pay for on the backend from Bondi's Island.
Yeah.
So if we have a crack in the pipe and groundwater gets in there, we're getting charged for groundwater entering Bondi's. So this, this project has been one that has been funded at that level for, you know, many years now. I can't remember back how far it was, but it's been at least four years, maybe five years.
Really?
And it allows us to try to correct that. So it's gonna eventually pay back, but I'd like to know what that payback would be. If we've seen anything to date, and now, by knowledge.
Savings we get from the billing from Springfield.
Yeah, because we're paying for every cubic foot of water that enters the facility through our pipes, and that's been reduced, and I don't know if it has been reduced. So I'm assuming the project is successful, but I'd like to see some numbers that show it's trending down and what that savings might be. So it might be another discussion with the DPW.
Hey, the Capital Budget Committee did recommend these.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, just on the backend, I think we need to know if this is working.
No, agreed.
We've been doing it for four or five years, so it's paying off on the other end.
Okay, on to the next one. Again, Public Works Sewer Drain Camera Replacement, excuse me. Hundred thirty thousand, again, coming from the sewer enterprise budget. Probably retained earnings, I would think. Mainline camera used to help detect faults, breaks, and other pipeline failures. So they are pursuing this. Their current cameras no longer working and parts to repair it are not being made anymore. Sounds like a reasonable purchase. Next one, Public Works Equipment. I know this one is gonna be an item to be discussed. A mini excavator, twenty five percent of the total value, which seventy one thousand five sixty seven for the total purchase. Requested amount seventeen thousand eight ninety two, recommended funding seventeen thousand eight ninety two. This is the second year of the request for a mini excavator. They have been renting this kind of excavator for many jobs for the department. Currently using a mini for doing water services on the water main replacement projects. And the excavator causes less disturbance than our larger vacos and digs a much cleaner trench without the big mess. It would be a great addition to the department. If not funded, we will need to rent this piece of equipment for all our water service installs. And therefore, the rental cost would need to be absorbed into our operating budget.
Again, on that issue, that's been going on for a couple of years now, and they request, I think, the first time I saw this was last year, is when they requested this mini excavator.
Yeah.
I still haven't seen, although the statement here says if not funded, we would need to rent. Well, how many times a year do you use it? I like to know what the potential cost would be to rent this piece of equipment rather than pay. And where I'm going is, I mean, as both of you know, is, I mean, we've got quite a challenge to cut a couple million dollars. And if we keep approving, approving, approving without getting additional work done by some of the department heads to tell us, to clarify a statement, and says, you know, they rent it. Okay, well, how many times do you rent it? Four times a year at ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Then maybe it makes sense.
Yeah, I see, this will be used to, for all our water service installs. I think, though, in this one, the point is still valid on, but I think this is fully gonna be funded from a combination of the sewer enterprise fund and the water enterprise fund.
And that's the only reason I'm not so concerned, but I'm still concerned because you alluded to that it would be absorbed into the operating budget.
Into the, yes.
Which is now general.
Into the, no, into the operating budget of the sewer enterprise fund and the water enterprise.
It doesn't say that, but, yeah, it's just a clarification, yeah.
I mean, it does require it to be paid one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, because under the water enterprise, the water department's picking up seventy five percent of it, and the sewer's picking up twenty five percent. So it would be paid through the retained earnings or through the earnings of the department. So it doesn't go, doesn't affect the tax rate or the general fund.
Just a follow-up to that, and to the bottom line on this is, Jim, you and Christine may remember some years ago on appropriations, how does, how would this? I'm trying to finish on my, I just left my, just jumped out of my head.
Wash your thought.
The enterprise funds are relatively new.
Yes.
Structure. The appropriations committee had recommended them.
Right.
But it did separate, so in the past, before these were established, the cost of the mini excavator would have been a cost of the general fund.
Exactly, exactly.
And the fees, the water and sewer fees, they would go into a water fund and a sewer fund, but they didn't directly offset, you had to transfer.
They make themselves supporting enterprises.
Right.
So it doesn't interfere with the general fund.
That's where, that's where I was heading. So with the statement that was made in the last council meeting we had with, I believe it was the last one or the one before, the DPW mentioned that the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission is passing on rates this year and for foreseeable future.
Yeah, I think I was, I didn't attend, but I watched a portion of that. And it sounded like we're gonna have rate increases passing through to us.
Yeah, on a regular basis. Now, have we ever used the enterprise funds to offset some of those increases?
Actually, I thought I had heard that.
That's why I was asking.
It was either last year or the year before that they had actually used a little bit of the, I forget whether it was the sewer or the water fund to kind of.
Balance it out, yeah.
Smooth out the level of the increase.
Right.
I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
And that's where my thought goes, is that, you know, even though it's, it says, you know, seventy two thousand for the mini excavator, and it's a hundred and thirty for the, it's coming out of the enterprise fund, it's still taking monies available that maybe we could use to offset some of these costs that we keep passing on.
Can't take it out of the enterprise fund. That would be contrary to state law. The enterprise fund is to support those funds. Oh, yes.
Not take it out, offset some of the costs that we're gonna be passing on.
Well, that's it. And I imagine they can take some of the retained earnings, and that's what Jim was, I think, just referring to, to stabilize the rates.
Yeah, right, I think actually part of that budget package, that initial budget package, included a budget for the sewer, water, and the new one, the.
Storm drain. Yes, yes, it is.
But either way, if you have to raise the rates, it's the town residents that have to pay it, whether it's water, water, sewer.
So, but there is a way to, and again, it just goes back to, yeah, it's, we're paying for it out of enterprise, but it's still monies being spent from the funds that.
Right, you want to make sure it's a, it's a necessary.
Yeah, otherwise, it may be better use of that funds to benefit everybody in town to reduce their water and sewer rates next year and the year after. I mean, just a discussion, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know. I'm not that familiar with these. I know you two have dealt with it over the years. It sounds like it's been done before, that they've paid money from the funds to reduce the cost to the town residents.
To me, it's, I have to say, it sounds like a reasonable explanation of why they want to purchase this. Evidently, it's not just the sewer function, but the water function. And they're both willing, they're willing to share the expense of this. So it obviously is gonna be shared between those departments for all the projects. And if it's a tool these gentlemen can use.
Yeah, I think if I heard Tom, you know, it may be a question back to Bruce. So if you didn't get it, how much would you anticipate having to rent a substitute machine? And how much do you think that rent would come out to?
Right, and how many times a year do you actually do it?
Yeah, I mean, we've had some history there, so the last couple of years they've been renting it. So how many times have you rented it?
Okay, so there's, we'll mark that for further research.
Just so that if there's a possibility of reducing the burden onto the residents and the taxpayers.
Oh, I agree.
I'd love to explore every opportunity. I think we need to be creative.
Impersonally, I mean, you, you know, I get, if I recall the timeline that Denise explained. We, she has to present a budget to the town council, and then by May first, is it? And then you have really the month of May.
Until June first.
To determine those things. So some of these may be included in the budget recommendations, and I suppose you could even, the town council will even wind up authorizing that budget and still continue to.
Cut.
To, you know, explore these items, and if there's something that could be done otherwise.
Yeah, it's worth asking the question. I agree with Tom, it's worth asking the question. I'm gonna mark this one, I'm thinking, okay. Okay, the water enterprise fund. We have Maple Street Water Services Interconnections and Upgrades. Oh, boy. Eight hundred and thirty five thousand, three hundred and fifty eight dollars. Project will complete Maple Street Water Main Replacement in its entirety. The old six inch main has a history of breaks and is tuberculated, restricting flow and water quality. In addition, waiting for this project will mean the delay of paving Maple Street. Recommend bonding for this item. Didn't they create a type of district?
There was a diff.
Finance diff.
Yeah, because of the project on Dwight and Maple.
Right.
Yeah.
But this is East Line Meadows cost.
I don't know that.
That's, that's my understanding of it.
Did we?
It's the final, apparently, though, to complete it.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, maybe that's just a question, and I'm sure Bruce can answer this off the top of his head, but one point three million dollars is a substantial amount of money, and, I'm sorry, eight hundred and thirty five thousand for that piece. So if we're looking at eight hundred and thirty five thousand, and there's monies, I don't know how that, how the diff is working.
Would this be as expensive a project if we didn't have the new nursing home and so forth? Probably something that had to be done, but would it have to be done to the extent that we're having to do it now?
Yeah, good way to put that question.
Yeah, I, you know, it's been a while since our capital group got together and sat through and asked these same questions, but it certainly sounded like the DPW had thought that through and that it was gonna be easier or better to get this done before they go and try to pave.
Oh, absolutely, I don't believe in paving and then digging it up again.
No, yeah, you gotta do things that are right order.
Yeah, but I guess as a former recessor, what gets me a little concerned about this is that we don't get any taxes from this nursing home. They claim exempt status. They claim exempt status. And when I see a price tag of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, three fifty-eight that we have to absorb the taxpayers, it's, to me, it's bothersome. Anyway.
Isn't there, just as a, as former assessor, you might know, the, if it's, if it's classified as a nursing, as a senior, senior nursing center, it's tax exempt or if it's.
Not necessarily.
That's why I was asking.
But they claim themselves as nonprofit and.
But they're going to have a new section that's going to be in Eastline Meadow.
Yeah, and they claim that's under the, part of the corporation that is not part of.
So even nonprofits, don't they tend to pay taxes in lieu of or something? Something in lieu of taxes and it usually comes out to just about the amount?
And I believe they were approached and refused. For instance, Bay Path University, very good court citizens. They have agreed to a payment in lieu. They have a beautiful building down there, certainly in addition to the town.
I know Brownstone has been paying and they're nonprofit. They've been paying in lieu of taxes for years and years.
Exactly, exactly. They're under chapter one twenty-one A. They're under a different part of the law. Nonetheless, they have paid in support. And I can't understand why any group would come into this community not want to pay at least for the services they get. The roads, the water, the sewer, the police coverage, the fire coverage, and now the ambulance coverage that they'll get.
Yeah, but you have to.
But that's just.
Yeah, okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, that's, that's my thought. So they, you're recommending bonding for this item. And that payment, that debt service will come out of the water enterprise fund. Okay, the next project would be the, on the Prospect Street, a water tank. They need to do the tank's painting. And that's one point three million. And it has evidently visible corrosion and the mass DEP has required that the tank to be painted. So.
Yeah, so this is one that nobody really wants to have to do.
Right.
But we don't have much choice.
Don't have much choice.
We can't, that provides pressure to the whole north end or south end of town, I think.
Right. So those two combined gives us a total of two million, one thirty-six, three fifty-eight recommended funding. Those are two bonding items, so they will impact the debt and interest to be paid from the enterprise fund for water. And we've already mentioned the excavator, which will be another we will discuss further. The stormwater enterprise is a new state mandate and it appears they will need a truck.
Well, in that, in this case, I think is, there may be a vehicle. If we go to treat police vehicles, there will be another vehicle available for them to use. I don't know why they would need a truck if it's a foreman. Foremen generally don't do the work.
Yeah.
They drive from site to site to check on the, on the progression of the work and to direct their employees. About forty-five thousand per truck.
Could we get, are you suggesting we could get a repurposed vehicle from another department? Okay.
Forty-five thousand was, I don't know. It's, it's for foremen to use to perform duties. But a foreman doesn't do the actual work.
No.
They drive around.
They supervise.
They supervise, yeah.
Yeah, right, let's have further discussion on that.
Yeah, and I don't think. Do you remember any discussion on that? I don't think this one was presented at the time that way. It must have been a follow up one.
All right. Okay, very good. Let's see, what else we have on the agenda? What did I do with my agenda? Took care of that, took care of that. We cannot review information on various topics by the finance director. Do we want to tackle further discussion on the new positions that have been requested?
Just, it's a little difficult, only because the people who have really the most understanding of, of the positions and the needs for the positions and what, what the backup plan would be if the positions weren't. And I'd hate to try to make decisions.
Without further information.
Without their input. I mean, so it's, it's a little difficult. At the risk of sounding a little weird, I mean, looking at the organization charts, you know, I know that both the police and the fire chiefs have requested a second in command, if you will. And I never know how that works when you have a one direct report. Because it means that the person who reports to you is really in charge of everything. And it always seems kind of like a funny awkward kind of organization chart.
That's not a pyramid, it's more like a straight one.
Right, so you're either going through that person and actually doing your stuff or, or that person's doing everything. Organizationally, I always find that to be an awkward type, type of thing. But that's not what I know.
Yeah.
Again, I think we've discussed this in general in the past. It's like, that's, if I recall, a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. And that's the gift that keeps on giving year after year.
You build it right into your operating budget.
So that would be an increase for next, it would just go on and on and on and increase the town's OPEB responsibilities tremendously. So I mean, it's nine full time and it's four part time.
Yes.
So that's really thirteen positions. And that's, I mean, I can't ever recall adding thirteen positions to the town in one year. I've never.
I don't remember that being requested in one year.
I can, and I was hoping that we'd have that discussion with, as the question that we asked Sarah to follow up on last time was, you know, have her and the town manager come back with some recommendations on what they saw might be cut. And we didn't get that information, so now we're still shooting in the dark and we're still waiting for information to help us make an informed decision, but that's, that's thirteen positions. I've never seen a budget with thirteen positions in it.
I haven't either.
Yeah, the, the other piece, and again, this will, this was one of the follow ups, so hopefully Monday we can talk it through, but it, it's hard. If you look at the summary of the operating budget, one of the smaller increases is the school department budget and everything else is, is much higher. And it had, a lot of it has to do with the minimum wage increase, with the wage salary study and the adjustments made to that, as well as the fact that none of the increases in salaries were budgeted last year for those positions that were in contract negotiations. So when you're looking at the difference between last year's budget and this year's and twenty's budget for comparison purposes, it, it's way out of whack because it just looks like we're increasing, you know, in crazy numbers. So I was trying to find where the reserve fund was budgeted, where the, we had put the central dollars, you know, to, I can't, it couldn't have been the normal reserve fund because that looks like it's just level funded between.
It's a hundred and twelve thousand.
Right, so I'm just having a little difficulty doing apples to apples.
Do you think it would serve us to request the, the new step in grade plus the job study results for the department heads and managers? Because perhaps that would clarify some things.
I think I thought Sarah was going to separate out what the increases were that were budgeted last year into a central reserve, whatever account was used for that.
Yeah.
And so that we could normalize between the two, two years.
Exactly.
And I thought she was going to show us how much of that increase was also a result of the, the wage salary adjustments that were made at that day of the study.
Do you think that the department heads are under contract or, I don't know if they do that anymore. Some of the, I remember that, you know, for instance, our director was under contract until the charter came into place.
They're under contract.
They're under contract.
And that was part of my discussion to follow up on our request to try to break out that information that Jim just discussed. And we also asked for, she mentioned there's two contracts which have been unsigned, which will be signed. We don't know if there's, what the financial impact of those contracts are.
No.
She didn't even mention who they were. So, so there's two that are out there and there are department heads that we know of.
Yeah.
Because that's who is under contract. The department heads are all under contract now. And how long of an impact or how, how many years are we looking at and what's the impact on this year's budget? If any, I don't know if they're, they've got an automatic increase. I don't know if there's something to go with it.
If, if, if there wasn't really a reserve budgeted last year for the potential increases that actually was appropriated, it would, it would help me understand why you had such a good year last year in terms of the difference between your revenues and expenses.
Yeah.
But, because that would mean, and it would make sense why this year is so much tighter because you're basically picking up, you know.
The levers, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's more information.
When was that study completed? In fiscal nineteen.
Yeah.
In fiscal nineteen, so. Yeah, we still need that information. If we don't get it, we're not going to be of much use. And the other question we had from our previous meeting was how many cases of litigation are still under books? And we could only get that from Denise, I would think.
Yeah. And the potential financial impact, I mean, just, a lot of it's just projections. We don't know. We don't know if we're going to win or lose, but we haven't been, you know, hasn't been too.
Yeah.
Too aggressive lately.
So shall we hope that on Monday we have some answers?
Yeah, and, because tomorrow was a holiday, so the.
Right.
Nobody's off.
Yeah, animals closed.
All right, so we won't really get any additional.
And if they're back to work on Monday, I know they do work from home at times, especially.
Then I, I think to the extent that Sarah and Denise could potentially join us, Monday would be much more helpful because we only have that day.
Yeah.
So there wouldn't be a lot of benefit in having a follow up because we can't.
Well, it's my intent, I, you know, Kathleen Hill asked me to be there. It's my intent to just give them highlights of what we have found, where there are particular things in the budget that we feel is greater research. We certainly can't make any solid recommendations because we're missing information.
So are you thinking that for the twenty-third, it would be more like a status update?
Exactly.
Well, that sounds much more reasonable.
Yes, especially since the town manager has to present the budget for May first. And I imagine will be in the background during some of the month of May to review what's been finalized. But it would be good to sit down with, I agree with Jim, it'd be good to sit down with both of them and say, you know, has, has this been researched? For instance, on that piece of equipment, did we find out, you know, how many times a year is it used? Of course, if, when you get water breaks, you can't predict them, but how many times a year is it used? What is the cost of renting? You know, is there a less expensive way of doing this instead of a purchase? So there, there's different things that we can set up. I will go through this weekend and come up with some of the things that we've highlighted here on capital. And I think also we, we have to alert them that we find the, the request for new positions and the salary recommendations have left questions in our minds as to what exactly, until such time as we can get some answers from the staff.
I would hope that Denise and, between Denise and Sarah, they can answer that question pretty readily.
I would hope so.
So if they're able to make that meeting on Monday, they should be able to answer it. Denise is very familiar with the contracts. She needs to be. Those are all her department heads. So I'm sure she knows which ones are left and what potential impact it might have on the bottom line budget.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, okay. We've already, we okayed the three cruisers, but not the, so we're going to let that stand on the capital.
Well, we didn't, we didn't okay the three. We just, the recommendation was for two. And the discussion item came up as to, you know, perhaps we really ought to do three. And Tom, you mentioned there was only, no, I thought there were two authorized last year.
It was, it was the year before.
Year before last.
Three years before that. So what's happened is they've gotten behind the April. And I think in the future, one way to help address this is that, put it in the operating side. To have two cruisers on the operating side rather than at the capital request, which is an up or down vote. Put it in the operating budget. You replace two cruisers every year.
Yeah.
To me, that makes more sense.
We used to do that. We considered them consumables, don't we? Remember that famous phrase?
Yeah. Yeah, and then I think what happened is because of the definition of capital expenditures.
Anything over twenty thousand.
Right, I think we wound up.
Having to do that.
Yeah, and, and technically back then, it really didn't matter. It didn't have to be, it just had to be reviewed by a capital planning committee. It could have gone and it could have probably stayed in the operating budget.
Yeah, but to me, I think that's, that's a reasonable thing that we need to look at in the future is let's, let's just take it out of capital and just move it over.
Yeah.
Since that's, that's a yearly request.
Yeah.
And as I was stating, what happened some years back, under a former, under the former, former government, they made a decision when two were requested to give them one.
Yeah.
So then they fell behind.
That's, that's what started it.
And then they had, they had a serious accident and they lost a cruiser. Now they're down another one.
Yeah.
So it's, it just, and they haven't caught up.
Yeah.
They haven't caught up. And as I stated, you know, in the past, I, I would rather see, I, I don't want to see a public safety vehicle breaking down on the way to some incident.
No, no.
So in this truck, although it's listed as an all purpose vehicle, it can be used as, as a supervisor vehicle.
Yeah.
And it can be used in the parade. It can be used in accidents to carry some of the police equipment necessary to set up in an accident area.
Yes.
You know, with the cones and the barriers. And they use it on a regular basis for other, other purposes, so.
And you have the twenty-five thousand dollar feasibility study was a, was a question mark.
Yeah, now where did that appear? Or you may have the list of all the requests.
I'm looking at the list of all the requests.
Yeah.
But I, I believe it should be on there.
It was, it was questioned though, the fact that it wasn't on there.
Okay.
It wasn't on there. The other thing that wasn't on there was the voting machines. There was a request for the voting machines, which I thought was reasonable, knowing, having worked in the election process for the last twelve years. Until the last couple of years, I, the voting machines are out of date. They're starting to have issues. Next year, we have, I think, Jenny, what was it for? Elections next year?
Yeah, Tom wanted to have it in place and at least test it out for at least one election before the presidential primary.
And that's something that the secretary of state is moving towards. I mean, the machines that we have are, I don't know how old they are, but they're very old and they're outside of their maintenance periods.
Yeah.
So I don't want to see an election in our town fail because the machines break down. And we're doing hand pellets.
Oh gee.
So I think it's something that we need to really look at and discuss and it was taken off.
Yeah, and again, it's been too long for me to recall the exact details, but, but it didn't sound like it was something where we would face a failure. We did have to, we did have to start looking at replacing, but you could replace a couple, you know, start, start changing and et cetera.
I'm not sure.
The theory, there was enough of an argument that led us to feel like it wasn't.
But I don't know where the argument came from not being part of that discussion. Again, I, I worked the polls. I was a registrar for many years. And the machines do break down. I've seen them break down.
Sure.
And they become a real problem when we, you have one per precinct and you have one backup machine.
Yeah.
We've had instances where a machine would fail and we have to do the backup. We have a line out the door for that precinct.
And with a presidential election next year.
Yeah, I mean, with four elections coming up and these machines are not getting any younger and they're failing.
Right.
So I, I'm not sure who did the presentation, what, that was a comment made by someone who really is. So I, I'm not sure who did the presentation, what, that was a comment made by someone who really is not.
Yeah.
Close to the process, I mean, I was very close to it, I was there, I worked on the machines, I fixed the machines.
Yeah.
I, I, I did it all. And.
Did you have a listing, uh, when you were in the Capitol planning?
There, there's a listing of the machines, and there is a, there is a spec sheet, um, on the new machines. Which weren't very different from the machines we have, at least of the way that they look to me. And there was thought process that you could almost, you know, if you got one or two, you could get a spare, you'd have a spare or something, and, and. As opposed, again, it's all trying to be reasonable, but not being.
Yeah, prioritize, yeah.
Prioritize, but we don't wanna have a ton wide failure, especially in an election. I, I think it's something to at least discuss why it was taken out and let the whole council hear.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think Monday will be interesting, hopefully they both have free schedules that they can come in and see us at some point. Jeanie has planned for us to be there for four hours. Okay, so we'll be in the conference room on Monday, the library?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I guess that's as much as we can do today. I expected it to be longer unless you find that there's something else you'd like to discuss other than what was on my agenda. I was glad we went through the Capitol planning so quickly. Yeah, is there any other question that you feel you need from the school? Because Superintendent Smith said he would make his, make himself available to answer any questions we might have.
I, I do have a, a question, and it kind of coincides with the discussion we just had on the roads. There's, in the five-year capital plan, uh, there's a replacement of just under a million dollars for, um, the HVAC units on the, on the roof for Meadowbrook. And, uh, are we putting the cart before the horse?
Oh.
So we're gonna go up there and do this major work to replace those units, which are not, they're not small units, they're not air-conditioned units. These things weigh tons, and they usually sit, sit on steel beams, which are secured to the roof, so. To, and, you know, and, and to me, it would make more sense to maybe look at doing that before we replace the roof. Rather than replace the roof and potentially damage it when we're putting these new units on it.
Yeah, that sounds like a reasonable question, Tom.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and it's on the plan, five-year of plan for next year, so I, I would hate to see us, you know, build a nice new shiny roof. And most of these roofs are rubber membranes now, so all you have to do is walk on them and you can tear them.
Yeah.
And that's why you have trackways, uh, so that you don't tear them.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be putting up these units, which weigh tons.
Right.
I don't know how many units would go on the school, but in either case, I think it, it's problematic that something could happen.
That's a good question.
I'd rather see that be addressed.
Yeah, I agree. If they've got it on for later, let's not put the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Jim? Just a few.
Uh, no, no, I mean, it's, it's, it's more, uh.
It's great, we have questions.
A better feeling about the, uh, the dynamics of the, the operating budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, now that we've covered the Capitol, that's, gotta get down to the nitty-gritty of that. It, it didn't seem that there were any outlandish expense items, uh, as far as for each department. Other, you know, they had the salary, they had the expenses, didn't seem that there were any.
In the, in the non-salary expenses.
Right, not, exactly, uh, our questions are mostly related to the impact of the job study and the contract settlements.
Yeah, o- only because of the way the numbers are presented, it, it makes it hard to.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I think, when you can see it clearly, it'll probably look very reasonable, but it's just difficult to see it.
Well, when it's not segregated, like you said, if there's, if there's a portion of last year that's in this year, and they get retroactive. Then we need to know that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, until Monday, I will call to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move to, yes.
You second it?
I do.
Okay, all those in favor, all right.